Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, how great your name is. What an honor and privilege it is to gather tonight in this room to think, to dream, to plan, to look at how this community will grow and thrive. We thank you for your protection, for your goodness to us. Father, we ask for more of that. We ask for this room to be filled with wisdom and knowledge tonight. Great discernment as plans are made for moving forward to help every person grow and thrive in this community. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' name.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Clerk Treasurer, January, would you please call the role of the council?
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton. Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Sixth President, one office.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to public comments. We would like you to step to the podium, state your name and address, and we allow three minutes for comments. Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the accounts payable register voucher approval for October 14th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of September 23rd, the approval of the work-study meeting minutes of February 24th, the letter from the clerk treasurer requesting purchase of approval and approval of software upgrade, and a letter from the park superintendent requesting approval for the purchase of two vehicles.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Councilor Sheehan. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to border zoning appeals and large gathering actions. Ms. Schein.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two special exceptions and one large gathering. So petitioner for our first special exception is Mark Johnson. Owner is Anthony Haddock. Mark, would you step to the podium, please?
Hearing done.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section 21-136 to allow a used car dealership to be located in the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District on 2.064 acres. Luxury Motor Incorporated Used Auto Dealership hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be three employees. The internal services will include car wash, detailing, and oil changes. No engine work will be performed. There will be 50 to 100 cars. No cars will be parked on the grass, neither in the rear nor front of the property. The petitioner will be using exciting poles and lighting. The parking lot will be striped. The main office will consist of a waiting room, business office, and restroom. New signage will be installed, and there will be an exterior remodel of the building. This property has been approved for a used car dealership before, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
How are you doing tonight, sir?
Good, how are you?
We know what Sheila read, but do you want to tell us a little bit more about your business, what you're planning?
We are committed, it's called Luxury Motor. We have a lot of store in Illinois, in Chicago, and we want to open some stores here in Indiana. So we're going to start to open the first store here in Maryville. We bring like luxury car with a good price.
Okay.
Used car.
Very good. Questions from the council?
How many employees will you have there?
What's that?
How many employees?
We're going to start with the three.
Three?
But the other location we have, we have 12, and we have 15. So depends, you know? And we're going to hire all the people from Maryville.
Okay.
I think this is Leona's ward, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Sheila, from?
No, except for I did speak with Mr. Johnson about the problems we had with the previous lease, people who leased it, and he said that he was not going to store tires and none of those other things that code enforcement had problems with in the past. So I did tell him that we'll be watching.
Yeah, we already cleaned everything. We removed all the stuff they once have. We're going to do the whole remodeling for the whole building from A to Z. We're going to change everything. I sent you that paper how it's going to be. It's going to looking big different.
Okay.
It's going to look nicer place.
Yeah, that sounded good luck for luxury cars anyway, so makes sense that you won't do that. Anything else from the council? Containing motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak. Who did the second?
Yeah.
Counselor Neal. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Mr. January.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
No.
President Bella.
Aye.
So we have five in favor.
Five in favor, one no.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I don't see Mr. Lacy in the audience, but he was informed to be here. Would you like to defer or elevate Maryville LLC?
What do you suggest? We don't need him here, right?
Well, I would suggest, in case anybody wanted to ask any questions, that the petitioner be here, plus petitioner has a responsibility to back up his petition.
Very good.
Okay.
Sheila, is this, Mr. President, if I could, Sheila, is this the Brown Building all the way at the end of 86th Place, up against I-65?
Yes.
By Frito Lay?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's your word?
Yeah. It's over by PBS.
Okay.
Turn on 86th, all the way back.
So I will call him for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Let's wait. Just have a motion to defer then, please.
Motion to defer, Mr. President.
Second.
You have a motion and a proper second to defer this petition. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will defer, Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then we have a large gathering permit for Chris Slomofsky. Approval for Winter Wonderland, 7595 East Lincoln Highway. This event will be held starting Friday, November 21st, 2025, through Tuesday, December 30th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. This event is held to showcase seasonal Christmas lightings. The number of people expected to attend is unknown, as tickets will be sold. Therefore, there will not be any drinking fountains available. However, premier porter potties will be supplied, one male and one female. Republic Service is providing one dumpster and four trash cans. Telephone service is not available to the public nor on-site, as none will be needed. There will not be any overnight stays or no entertainment provided. Also, animals will not be a part due to the nature of this event. An amusement and entertainment permit has been secured, as well as food service permit. Where not applicable, security will be provided by Maryville Police Department.
Is the petitioner here?
No, the large gathering people don't normally come.
Okay, just checking.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve for...
A second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Counselor Neal, for approval of this large gathering permit for winter wonder lights.
Mr. President, council members, this isn't a noise, I hate to pinpoint property owners out there, but I've received more calls on Haunted Hills and the loud music and the headlights going out on the 83rd Avenue than I have with this development, Sheila. I don't know if you received phone calls from neighbors. I know we had a couple residents out there when Haunted Hills first started, but I haven't gotten any phone calls or any emails complaining about this.
Plus, this has been running for years.
It's been running for years. It's kind of a, if you will, kind of a replacement for the Festival of Lights that used to be at Hidden Lake. So I don't necessarily have a problem with it. Chris seems to do a pretty good job out there.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, budget and finance, Counselor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. I do not have a report tonight.
Thank you. Street Department and Parks Maintenance, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Well, Steve King and his crew have been doing about the same. Park maintenance, the bike trail cleanup, garbage pickup off the street, those are digital signs that have gone out. They fixed that, and one went out again, which I already told Steve about. And that's about it for me. Maybe Steve will report a little more later with his report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Counselor Hardaway.
No report.
Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Matt Lake has completed the cleanup on the Hendrix Street ditch, which is called Kaiser Ditch. So that's been completed and paid for by the Stormwater Board. And I think that's about it for my report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Public Safety, Counselor Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mrs. Neal.
No report.
Economic Development, Counselor Pettit.
Mr. President, we had a brief RDC meeting as it relates to the Whitcomb Street Improvement Project for the Right-of-Way Acquisition. Robinson Engineering wants to retain Right-of-Way Jones out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. Bill Jones has done a lot of right-of-way work throughout the state of Indiana, so the RDC approved that contract for $143,000. The other item, I received a couple of emails from Dr. Suggs at Maryville Community School Corporation, and Mr. January was kind enough to get that check cut, so Joanna Guardiola took the $400,000 annual grant payment over to them for 2025. So if I'm not mistaken, there are two more years left on that grant that we all, RDC and the council, had agreed to. So they have their funds in hand.
Thank you, Shawna. Utility Liaison, any report for Leona tonight? Assuming not. Parks Recreation and the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
I'm going to defer to Jerry at his time, and I noticed on the agenda for tomorrow night, Mr. President, you've got a couple of items that we discussed at our last committee meeting. Shawna and I and the staff were there that we're going to want to go over tomorrow night at the workshop at 5:00.
Very good. Special Committees, Abandoned and Blighted Properties, Counselor Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Code Enforcement, stats for the month of September, we had a total of 229 calls for ordinance violations and assignments. Out of those 229 calls, 18 tickets were issued and 48 warnings were issued. And that is it for that report for that committee.
Thank you. Special Town Projects, reminder that the chair is now Counselor Sheehan.
Thank you, President Bella. There is a blood drive that will be taking place at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center through the months of October and November. Please visit the redcrossblood.org to register. I'm sure that there is information at the center letting you know more about that, and Jerry can further speak on that. We have our trunk or treat coming up October 23rd, also at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. That is 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. This is a free event for all ages. Come join us for a variety of fun activities, decorated vehicles, and don't forget to wear your costumes. We are seeking businesses, organizations, and groups to participate. If you would like to do so, please visit maryville.in.gov/TrunkForm. This registration is free. And that is all for my report.
Thank you. We are getting closer, though, to your next committee, which is the Semi-Quintcentennial Committee. Counselor Sheehan.
Thank you. We are seven months out, and we will be having our first meeting next month to start our working on that event. And we have gotten several residents to sign up to be on that committee, and we will be reaching out to them to make sure that they are able to start our meeting.
Excellent.
And that is all for that report.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to Department Reports. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Counselor Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The Lake County Solid Waste, they're having a Halloween costume swap shop. It's open for the entire month of October, but only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's located at the facility at 8695 Broadway. Bring in a costume, and you can swap it out for a costume. So that's basically how it works. The costumes, of course, have to be cleaned and sanitized, nothing, you know, old and stained or anything. And you can also exchange like one costume for like three accessories, which will equal up to one costume. So it's a pretty big swap shop for Halloween, a great way for parents to save money. They don't have to go out and buy new costumes. They can just swap them out, and the kids can have a different costume. So it's Tuesday and Thursday for the entire month of October from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
And that's all.
The Shared Ethics Entity, Counselor Hardaway.
The Ethics Summit is October 30th at the Avalon, starting at 8:00 a.m. Goes to 11:00 a.m. It is a free event for everyone. If you can go and register, go to the My Maryville app. It should be posted on where to register. Once again, October 30th, 8:00 a.m. at the Avalon Ethics Summit. That is all.
Thank you. Anything else from Fire Territory Board, both Counselor Neal and Counselor Hardaway?
No.
Clerk Treasurer's Office, Mr. January.
Sure. Other than the fact that we are going through an audit with the State Board of Accounts for the year of '24 and '23, and we didn't have any receipts for the food and beverage tax, I have no report other than that.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on tonight to Department Head Reports. Start with Jerry from the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, President Bella. Wanted to address a message that went out that we'd be closed on Sundays. That is currently on hold until further conversation, so we are open on Sundays right now. Program update, winter basketball has an early bird registration where you can get $20 off of the fee up until the end of this month, the 31st. The walls in the community rooms and the classrooms have been painted by five-star painters. They're coming back out to do the hallway for the locker rooms next week, I believe. And that's all I have right now.
Jerry, what about the flooring?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, Mr. President.
Yep.
I talked to Geis today about it, Jerry.
So two weeks ago, ICC floors said that they would have a contract ready yesterday, and they don't. So I tried calling today just to get a quick update, and there is no update, but it does seem like the most progress we've made. So they have the materials. They're just waiting on the agreement to be established, the contract to be legitimate, and then they'll start ordering materials, so.
Okay, because Core was under the impression, Mr. President, that you had picked out the floor, the color and everything, and the contract, the paperwork was all done. As you folks will remember, Core is taking care of this and paying for this with ICC under the warranty for the building. Geis led me to believe today that all the paperwork had been done.
So that is probably very accurate, but I couldn't get ahold of the representative from ICC floors today.
ICC.
So the last I heard was Monday that it should be good to go, so I would assume that that's correct then.
Please keep us updated, Jerry.
I will.
Don't mind. Okay, thank you. Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start off with the statistics for September of 2025. Maryville Police Department had 2,537 calls for service, which required a total of 4,355 officer responses. We had 118 adult arrests and seven juvenile arrests, and then we ended up having a total of 468 tickets that were issued. Also, one of the other things I wanted to bring up today was we're just about a day short of a month worth of our traffic unit being out, and some of the numbers that they had were pretty impressive. The numbers for the traffic unit are as follows, and this is for two officers. There was a total of 294 calls for service that were accumulated between the two officers. These calls for service included traffic stops, accidents, private property accidents, personal injury accidents, and sometimes, if need be, they did help out a couple times with patrol. But their focus is mainly on traffic and accident reports. There was a total of 276 tickets that were issued, and that number's probably going to rise because we still haven't gotten all the numbers tallied up for October. There was a total of 169 traffic stops, 145 warnings, and a total of 47 accident reports that were taken by those two officers. In comparison, these numbers are a little bit higher than the average patrol officers, but the average patrol officer is tasked with having to answer calls. The average call for patrol officer is right around 32 minutes versus nine minutes for a traffic unit. So this is very impressive to me that we're able to get it done, but more importantly, it serves as a testament as what can be accomplished when we have the personnel and the properly structured unit and equipment as resources to get this done. So the traffic unit's going to continue, and if anybody has any issues or any problems with people speeding in certain areas, please feel free to email us or get in contact with our department, and we will assign our patrol or our traffic unit to those areas. That's all for my report.
Chief, if we had the resources and more officers, would you envision a larger-sized traffic unit for Maryville?
Yeah, we would like to have four officers doing traffic for Maryville. We would like to have a four-officer traffic unit. But again, we would need to bring up our numbers significantly, also have enough officers to answer patrol, or just patrol needs more officers. There's no ands, ifs, or buts about it. They're acting strictly proactive, and the fact that they're getting what they're getting accomplished now is a miracle, and I'm very proud of my officers for what they're able to do. But yeah, in short term, yes, four officers would be great. Four traffic control officers would be great.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief, I just wanted to mention, there is one street that I know never needs police, and that's Hendrix. There's never any speeding over there. I can attest to that.
Moving on to Planning and Building Department, Sheila Schein. Anything else?
No, I have no report, Mr. President.
Very good. Mr. King, Street Department.
The only thing I have to add is we've been doing a lot of asphalt patching lately. We're trying to get this wrapped up before LEFAX starts, which that's going to start on Monday. The schedule's on the website, it's on the news flyer that went out, the newsletter, and also, I'm sure it's on the My Maryville app. So that's all I have.
Steve, we're coming into the time of year now, of course, when it gets darker earlier, and I always like to remind you and the crews that with streetlights being burnt out, the darkness shows a lot easier now.
Yep.
So I know we have a few out on Maryville Road again.
Yeah.
Broadway.
Couple out on Broadway.
Yeah, so please let us know if you need anything from us to get those replaced.
No, we've been tackling those. As a matter of fact, as we're replacing the bulbs and stuff and these things, we're upgrading everything to LEDs as we swap them out, too, so.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
All right.
From the Administration Office.
Mr. Griffin completed his manager's report, and he placed it on your spots this morning for you. Other than that, that's all I got. I think Shawna had everything about the trunk or treat, although we do have, oh my goodness, over 58 participants, I think now, or maybe even more than that today. It's higher and higher every day, so maybe slow down on volunteering.
Grow, grow, grow.
We always need volunteers to help direct setup and traffic, though, so if there's anybody that would love to come out and hold a walkie or a megaphone, I can give you something to do.
Can I get a megaphone?
That'd be great.
Yes, of course, of course.
Please don't give Shawna.
Shawna and Shawna, they do not need megaphones.
I don't need a megaphone.
Peter. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have a first reading ordinance. It's an ordinance appropriating additional monies in excess of the current budget for the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund, all pursuant to Indiana Code.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Counselor Neal, for approval of this ordinance. You can see there the amount is $33,000. Questions or comments? Hearing done, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have the ordinance 25-31. It is the ordinance for the appropriations and our tax rates. There is a handout at your desk tonight with a variety of information about that. I will call on Trista, our financial advisor, to go over some of the particulars. This is a second reading ordinance. However, I will point out that the public comment for this ordinance was done during the first reading as dictated by state statute.
That's right. I have set at each of your chairs today two additional items. I'll start with the major fund summary, which has the pie chart on it. Just a few pointers, some public information as well. As a reminder, as you prepare to vote tonight on the budget for 2026, you all know that we've spent a little over three months so far getting this ready to get us to this point today, including, of course, meetings with your department heads, and then multiple meetings with the Budget Finance Committee. I would say probably a little bit more work than last year even because of SEA-1, right, the Senate Enrolled Act Number One, which is potentially going to be very challenging for us for next year. But overall, you've been able to arrive, as you know, to a funded budget. Many of your funds are balanced with the expected revenues for next year. A few do dip into your operating cash balance, which means that it is still funded. It just may not be balanced exactly against the revenues that we're expecting. A few quick comments, then. You see that in the pie chart of the general fund, the police department is almost 50% of the expense there. Very standard, very typical, but that does show that you continue to invest in public safety. Of course, we have other funds that you use toward that as well. Every department did make some cuts in their budget as you requested. What you see, though, in that difference column is that reflection of our perf expense now being divided out across departments instead of just being allocated only to the town administration fund. So if you don't see a drop in the budget, it's not because they didn't try or because they didn't engage in that process with you. Parks Department, of course, has been moved primarily to the Parks Town Reverting Fund, so what you see in the general fund is a large reduction, working toward the fact that our potential property tax receipt next year will be cut drastically. Parks is still funded, the same level that it has been, just somewhere a little bit differently. Overall, then, in the general fund, we've settled in a $12.9 million budget. That does leave some flexibility for you still. Once April hits next year and we see the true impact of Senate Enrolled Act One with the true circuit breakers released, tax cap loss. So right now, there are some additional places in the budget so that it is advertised and built. Hopefully, the impact is less than we're expecting, which, as we've all talked, hopefully will leave room for raises for your employees that you're planning to evaluate in April once we see what that true impact is. And we've talked about that already at committee, obviously. You do, though, if you recall, still receive that growth in your max levy, so there is an additional $336,000 coming your way from the state mandated 4% growth in levy. We just expect... We just expect that that plus more will be taken away by the new circuit breaker with the new deductions that were given in that property tax cut down state. The second sheet, the staple page, just goes through more of the funds for you to see in one fell swoop there the revenues that we expect, that we've all talked about, the expenses, and then if some of your operating cash will go toward whether there's an underfunding from the current revenues. The small yellow highlights there are just some places that we need to watch carefully and make sure that as we go through next year, things are working as we expect. And the four that are budget a little bit higher than their revenues is, again, to give those department heads some flexibility across the different lines they have. But they do work well to spend within the actual cash that they have. The last item, then, is the actual ordinance itself, so that you all have a copy of it. A couple pointers on that very quickly. The growth for the town, the assessed value did grow by 4.07%, which is fantastic. That essentially, then, is virtually level with the growth from the state in the max levy in the property tax, meaning that the overall tax rate should stay pretty consistent. The debt that's looked at for the upcoming GO bond is replacing some other debt falling off, meaning the tax rate then will level out. The town's assessed value now is just under $2.6 billion, which is fantastic. The reason at the bottom-left corner of Page One of your ordinance that the tax rate is a little bit higher than this year is because when we advertise and we put this paperwork through to the DLGF, we always advertise your assessed value a little bit low at 85% so that if there are any appeals on assessed value after the assessor has released the assessed values, you have some room in how that all balances out. We've talked about this before, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about it further. But point being, when the true higher assessed value is applied, the tax rate should settle back down into .65 plus a couple extra hundredths of a penny.
Trista, you mentioned April. Tell us what April means to us and why we don't find out what our figures are until then.
Right. So, the state overall budget process really has an annual calendar. It involves times during the year when the county offices, assessor, and auditor have to release different values of things. What we receive usually in August, although this year even there's a county still that has not released their assessed values, are the assignments from the assessor's office of the assessed values for the following year. The taxes are paid on the assessed value from the year prior. Once those assessed values are received and put out to each parcel owner, each property owner, they have an opportunity to appeal that through the assessor's office. And so, there are some appeals sometimes that occur here late in the fall before the DLGF then approves the budgets in December. The DLGF then, in December, approves our spending plan against the revenues that we're predicting, then uses the current assessed value at that time as any appeals may have been settled during those couple months. The budget order is then released in December, moving us into January with our approved numbers. However, moving then in the first months of the next year, there's another process the assessor goes through. And at that time, at that time, with the final kind of assessed value for that year, they're able to then tell us what the property tax cap impacts will be. They then calculate the 1%, the 2%, the 3% protections, which is just prior to them sending out the tax bills, which are sent out in May. So, at the point that we all receive our tax bills, they've then gone through this kind of secondary calculation about the assessed values, decided where we're capped out of paying our taxes, which now coming up this next year, the reason that we're not going to know until April is the additional credit that is going to be applied to everyone's tax bill, 10% of the tax determined or up to $300, whatever is more. That's on top of this increase of the homestead deduction that is increasing, as well as on top of a new deduction of 6% for all the 2% homeowners, property owners, excuse me. So, in the past, large apartment complexes, commercial businesses, had no deduction of any kind. There was nothing equivalent for them to the homestead deduction that the homeowners can receive. The new state legislation, though, is giving a 6% deduction off the top of the assessed value right off the bat. So, the taxes that they would pay on that is already cut. Then the additional credit comes after that. So, those things all have to be figured out, which is the numbers that we'll receive in April. At that point, then, we'll know, are we going to receive the full property taxes that we think? Or will it be, will our tax cap be even less? Meaning, less than the amount that we receive. Coming into this year for 2025, I believe we were at 200,000 collectively across the property tax funds in town. Right now, the legislation, LSA Legislative Service Agency, is predicting 800, over 800,000 for the town. So, it's potential that we could lose an additional 600 over what we did this year already. Our firm doesn't think it's going to be quite that high, but we don't do the calculations. You know, that's all down downstate. So, that is a very long answer to why we have to get to April. The bill right now, then, next year, has the 6% deduction going to 12, moving to 19 the year after. And so, this is not just a single-year effect that it will have. And we'll have a better idea, though, come April, what those future years will actually look like.
Just I've seen that some cities and towns are losing millions of dollars off of their budget. Is that right?
That's true. That's true, yes. Thankfully, Maryville isn't that bad. And the reason that we're cautiously hopeful that we won't hit that full $800,000 prediction is the percentage of 3% meaning business and the 2% commercial categories that you have in Maryville, your diversity is huge. As your business development has continued to grow, that, I think, will help tremendously. The 3% have no deduction of any kind. So, at least as it stands right now. So, that will help tremendously in Maryville being able to collect as much as you hope to.
But Trista, this governing body, the seven of us, have absolutely no power to raise taxes by statute. Is that correct? It's on the 1, 2, 3 that everyone's tax bill is being calculated.
So, right, the raise in the tax is based simply on the max levy.
Right.
You can't go above the 4%.
Right.
So, as assessed values increase, a tax rate goes down because we're confined to getting that max levy amount that the state says we can have. So, that's the fulcrum in the Peter Todd moves. If your assessed value drops, the rate has to go up to come back into that central value. So, as our assessed value goes up, which is, like I said, just under $2.6 billion, is fantastic, the rate will drop a little bit. But as the property tax value itself grows, you may pay more dollars in the tax bill simply because your assessed value has gone up.
Has gone up, right.
That's not anything that you all have voted to do.
Right.
That's the market.
That's the assessor. So, my home goes from 300,000 to 350,000. I'm going to see an increase in my tax bill on the 1% cap, correct?
Right, until you hit the cap, and then you're done.
Till you hit the cap.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, Counselor, just to point out, this is why the FOP was so gracious to just do a one-year contract this time with all these unknowns. So, we appreciate that. And then we're going to revisit the raises for other departments in April when we do get this final figure.
And that's, if I might just comment quickly, counsel might recall, some of you were not here at the time, but as we were coming into COVID, counsel did the same thing. We weren't sure what the effect was going to be because of how the economy was going. Counsel paused for a moment, said, "Employees, please let us just see what actually happens." And you were, then, that year, able to afford and paid out bonuses
Right.
in lieu of the raise. And so, that's exactly the opinions I heard from you all this year as well, and we're hopeful to be able to do that. The budget is built to allow that, assuming that the dollars will allow it.
Very good. Thank you, Trista. Any other questions for Trista? Just for clarity, this is ordinance 25-31, second reading. It is the ordinance for the appropriations and tax rates. It was approved tonight. If it's approved, please stick around so we all sign it, so Mr. January has a copy. We do need a motion, though, to approve it.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak with a second by Counselor She.
Neil.
Counselor Neal. Sorry, you guys still sound the same. Any questions or comments under discussion? Hearing done, Mr. January roll call, vote, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor. Budget's approved. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have a resolution 25-36. It's a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the town of Maryville, excuse me, through its town council, acting as the Works Board and core construction for professional pre-construction management services associated with the retrofit and refurbishment of the police department offices in the municipal building.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Second by Counselor She. Questions or comments on the motion? We've kind of gone over this quite a few times in workshops, right? Hearing no other comments, Mr. January roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 25-37. It's a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between town of Maryville through its town council, acting as a Works Board, and London Witty Group CPAs and advisors for professional bond finance and fiscal advisory services associated with the retrofit of the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. For approval of Resolution 25-37. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing done, Mr. January roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye. Six in favor, motion carries. Yes, it is. You just need to do that. So, that's a 2/3 votes, the motion carries, same with the Resolution 25-36. Okay. Moving on to 25-38. Resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the town of Maryville through its town council, acting as the Works Board and the American Structure Point for professional engineering and construction design services associated with the police department retrofit.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor She, Mr. Pettit for a second, for approval of Resolution 25-38. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. January roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, and motion carries, that is 2/3 vote also. Moving on to Resolution 25-39. Oh, here we go. It's a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the town of Maryville through its town council, acting as the Works Board and Mesgro for professional underwriting and bond financing accounting services associated with a municipal corporation general obligation bond, especially involving renovations to the police department offices.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Counselor She, the second by Mrs. Yuzlak.
Mr. President, just for clarification, to refresh everyone's memory.
Yes, sir.
We talk about in these resolutions that this is police department renovations, but I believe that it was Mr. Griffin's intent that this is also going to include the roof renovation on this building, correct?
That's correct.
Along with what Shauna and Rhonda had done with the park and welcome signs, Michael was going to lump that in as well, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The bulk of it is for the police department.
Police department offices.
You know, police department gets about everything that we do here, so.
We are expensive. Rick Bella said that, Chief. He drives a black Lincoln, you might want to follow him home.
And, Mr. President, also.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So, one of the things also, I know we just hired London Witty to do some work, but in this particular resolution, it has, it's curious, and I asked Trista about it, why do they keep saying that they're providing accounting services? And I think it's just maybe some nomenclature that they have previously, because they're clearly not providing accounting services. London Witty is providing more of an accounting service, and so is our financial advisor. So, I just wanted to point that out, because they're not providing accounting service.
Trista, is that just some contract language?
I think it is. I didn't look specifically at their agreement, but Mesgro's role in the bond is simply as an underwriter. And so, that means two things, basically, that they'll work through the amortization schedule in line with the expenses that you all tell them that you need the bond money for, for sizing number of years, that kind of thing. The second thing that they'll do, then, is work on marketing the bonds in the public market to then work on getting the best interest rate for you as those bonds are sold. And they won't do accounting work like it might be here, run on a daily basis operationally. It's just really those two main purposes.
I agree with that. Yeah.
Mr. January, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing done, Mr. January roll call, vote, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Carries, another 2/3 vote. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to the last resolution on the agenda, it's Resolution 25-40. It's a resolution providing for a transfer of appropriation balances from and among major budget classifications in the Administration Department. See there that it's a decrease of $35,000 in CCD or other equipment, an increase in the CCD fund contractual services for the same amount, the net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor She, Chair recognized, Mrs. Yuzlak for second for Resolution 25-40. Questions or comments? Hearing done, Mr. January roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, that motion carries also. Moving on tonight to new business, we have none. We have announcements. The next town council meeting is October 28th at 6:30. The RDC meeting is October 28th at 6 o'clock. The trunk-or-treat that we talked about tonight is October 23rd at 5:30 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We do have our council workshop tomorrow at 5 o'clock. Sorry the way the calendar fell, but it is the third Wednesday. So, hopefully, we'll see you all tomorrow. Without objection, we'll adjourn.
So moved.
We have one objection. You have the floor, Counselor She.